For the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to approve the agenda.
I'm motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
It moved in second. All of the voters signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Do you have anybody signed in? Like do you have anybody online? Okay, we'll move on to that. Student rep reports. Alexander. Nothing? Kami?
Yeah, I have a couple things. Girl Socker with the three Eastern Washington camp. And PHS sports are wrapping up in their final week.
Thank you. Yoshimi?
Um, ASB, nothing report, and then for being a UDOT in public. And me and my other dorm major are going to a camp next week in Calhoun.
Any questions for them?
Uh, like our P2 stuff. So it's just a little book of the songs that we do at the last one.
Great, thank you. Moving on to action items is discussion and potential action MOU Wednesdays.
So I'm gonna bring this up. Um, obviously, there may be people listening and for each of you and for those, um. I wanna make sure that we're really talking about late start versus early release Wednesdays. Last Thursday, we had a community, I called it the ice cream social in the comments here. Um, through social media, I had originally planned for just one at four o'clock, thinking we'd catch our workers that started really early in the morning, and then the social media said, well, there's some of us that work till five, so could you do one? So I did one at four and one at six. Between the two, we had about thirty-five people there. Um, we had some past students, we had some parents, we had some representation from our PAC group. Um, Deanna was there, our PEA president, two teachers. Actually, I had three teachers, but one signed in and made it very clear they were coming as a parent, but then we had two teachers there. Um, a- a- a variety of people. The discussion, um, started about, um, what is, I had a small presentation. We talked about the capital levy thing, so I just wanna be real clear. And then we went into the late start versus early release. And we talked about the, some of the main questions we've heard through the community is why didn't we have a say in it or a talk about it? And we explained that once we start negotiations, it's a good faith bargaining and we don't talk about it outside the room. So we kind of explained that. And then we talked about what it means to enter into um, a ratification meeting, what the teachers ratified and they agree first. Um, very much like when we vote on anything. Um, majority rules and they vote and, and we're not, Dan and I aren't a part of that meeting. We were told through those that were there, that was pretty good turnout. I don't know the number, but it was pretty good turnout. And they voted to ratify and, um, we brought it to you in July. And, um, you'd had time to review it and we ratif- or we ratified and agreed and it was done. And then that was on a Wednesday and on a Thursday, I put up my letter to the public about the late start. We then talked about what are the impacts to the family. Um, some of the families concerned were those that go to work and work far away. And or are families that don't have support. So an example would be the family goes to work at seven, um, the kids are at home waiting for the bus. They miss the bus. Who's going to get them to school? They don't have somebody to call, who the hell to do it. So that was one. The other one was, um, let's say there is a kindergartner, first grader there and someone that they feel comfortable age-wise or age-appropriate to stay at home with them till they get on the bus. But we've all, me included, had children that are ten, eleven, twelve, that might be right on that cusp. And their argument, not argument, their point of, um, that they wanted to make clear was, what about? Did they really lock the house? Did the dog really get in the backyard? Do we really know that the house is secure? Right? Those kinds of things. And so I heard that. And I can remember as a parent of my twelve-year-old son, you know, you might have him standing right there and say, no, don't forget to lock the door, and you'd walk out the door and forget. Um, so we heard that. We, um, heard that we have a, um, some of the parents that were there, um, really plan their travel and commute. And they might live in the middle of a bus route, but they drive their student to the first bus stop and put their child on that bus route, on that bus, excuse me. So that they know they're safe and they're on their way into school and then the parent heads off to work. We heard, um, about, um, the people who don't have the twelve-year-old at home. What are they going to do with the six-year-old? Right? We talked about trying to partner with the Boys and Girls Club. I'll tell about that in a minute. We talked about other, um, what we call student safety pieces like for that. I shared the reason that we talked a- about go- or we pre- uh, presented moving from late start, from early release to late start was we have a real safety problem at the middle school. And it's not a disrespectful, um, it's a typical eleven, twelve, thirteen-year-old. Um, school's released, let's just say one thirty, one forty-five, and practice starts at three fifteen. You know, we offered after-school safe place for homework and those kinds of things, but they don't all go where they're supposed to. And we don't have a way to open the front doors of Housel and say, okay, you go that way, you go that way with six hundred and fifty kids. We have to have some self-regulation of those individuals. And while we aren't we're re- we feel responsible for their well-being because they're being released and then they're expected to be back for practice. And we don't know how to, to keep them safe. We did have a couple issues at fourth or fifth grade. I don't think it was any third grades, but fourth or fifth grade where they'd, they're told by the parents, get on the bus and go home. And they walk with their friends down the street. Now, they were never really lost, but through either a Ring camera or the neighbor or whatever, they know the child did not get off the bus. And then we have to find, help find them. In our cameras, we were very successful and they weren't lost. So we talked about all of those pieces. We talked about equity and PLC. I'd like you to explain the timeframe and how that works because you're the PLC queen, so.
So, um, in ki- it kind of in the old days, we've had Wednesday early release for probably twenty-five-ish years. I, I'm not exactly sure, but it's been since I was a teacher. And, um, like Riverview used to be the first school, the last school dropped off in the morning and then the first school picked up. But that meant their school day was way shorter than any other school day. That really wasn't fair. So we've worked really hard over the last few years to make that equitable and to and, and line up the buses so one school's not standing there waiting ten minutes and another one's not trying to race to get out there on the bus. So that, you know, things kind of work like clockwork in the morning and the afternoon. Well, the thing about it is to get Riverview, uh, Riverview ca- teachers can't just go, go get on the bus, which is kind of what happens at the middle school with a handful of people out supervising or high school or and, uh, but at the elementaries, they supervise them and at the, at K-two, they a lot of times walk them hand-in-hand and put them on a bus or in mom's car or something like that. So they spend the twenty or twenty-five or thirty minutes after school getting all the kids where they're supposed to go. Um, and so they don't get an equitable amount of time after school. They have, they don't actually do the Friday early release because they're there, they can't do the extra hour and a half that the, some of the other buildings get. But we're down to like at the high school with time, they get about an hour and ten minutes, another building might get an hour and forty-five. It's just not equitable, equitable. And this is a way for us to make it equitable across the building, so it's fair. And teachers can have the same amount of time, get the same amount of professional development, and it just isn't, wasn't possible in the, in the afternoon. Especially with the Riverview issue, so.
So that's kind of what took place at our meeting. Just, help me just double, triple check, it's what's in my notes, but was there anything else that you think that this group should hear and we shouldn't put in public record?
Um, I think that, um, Kim talked about the younger and the older child there were, uh, was, uh, at least a p- one parent who expressed they have a younger and older child, but they don't want their, their older child to have to be responsible. They wanna take care of that to get the child on the bus. Not put them on the, on the responsibility holders of the older child. So there was that piece as well. Um, we also have a, a district where we have a lot of bus stops. Like, a bus may not go all the way up into Painted Hills and kids walk down and come to a stop. Um, so there's some of those pieces too, where parents watch their kids get to the bus stop, get on the bus. They won't be there to do that anymore. Uh, because they would be already be at work, so.
So then after the meeting, um, the six o'clock meeting didn't get over till seven thirty. We were there. I let everybody talk as long as they wished and so forth. Then I started to do some research. Um, I did some research on, from the Quincy School District at a small elementary called George Washington Elementary. It's in George, Washington. Um, I talked to some peers in the Seela School District, the Natche School District and West Valley who have late, um, late start. One of them's on, uh, one's on Wed- Mondays, one's on Wednesday, one's on Thursday, different times. Much like us, though, they went through that growing pain at the same time we did twenty or twenty-five years ago. And it's always been that way. It wasn't a change. So through that time, that community and schools have gone through that growing pain, right? And now it's a norm in their district, so their daycares are used to it and so forth. Then we, on Monday morning, we met at eight o'clock with the Boys and Girls Club. And what we learned from them is there are certain regulations for after-school programs. Licensor programs, licenses that they have to, to keep their licenses, there are certain things. And those are after-school programs. Their fees are basically non-existent to the community. They're on a sliding scale, so on and so forth. To do before school, it's a different license. It's basically daycare. So the application process that they would go through, they, they actually are interested in partnering with us. But it's not something they fill in a form online and two weeks later you get approved. It's a process that they would have to go through. And because they're in the middle of construction of the new building, then you have to get it permitted and it's not done and those kinds of pieces. So they were interested. We looked at how could we partner with, um, them and them being in our buildings and could we open one building early? Um, there's just many pieces there. So today, um, so then we met. Um, and we just talked about what our options were. And we also know today is July twenty-fourth. Right? Twenty-fourth. And we need to let our community know. So what today, the reason this is on is an action item, we're asking, or I am asking for you to give me guidance and allow me to discuss through, um, contract negotiations. I have potential of a, of one-year MOU to research and plan for the Boys and Girls Club and our other pieces, if that's, so be it, that's the way you think. I mean, if you support that, and then stay with a one-year MOU for early release. If the board chooses to not end MOU, then that's, that discussion to a potential MOU. That's great. What I don't want, um, the reason I'm putting this on the agenda to you is I don't think it's fair to our community to wait till August fourteenth when we have another board meeting. So, for approval or not approval. So what I'm asking for is approval to go into a discussion with the union about this being a potential. And either your, well, if we need to, if, if it's an agreed-upon thing that I can enter that MOU with your okay, and then you would sign the document afterwards. But this is giving me the verbal okay to enter into the discussion. So now I'm open for questions. I think that's my.
I would just say it is, it's a discussion. Um, you know, even if we, even if, say for instance, the we really wanted to do something like that, but the union, union, I mean, they have to agree. We've already bargained and we've already agreed to the contract. So it is, it is merely a discussion. And they're partners with us, they're great partners, and they wanna help.
Negotiation we've ever had.
Resolve challenges. And we don't want to present challenges to families, but we do know with any change, there's always growing pains. There was when we did, when we did the early release, twenty-five years ago, many years ago, there was challenges then as well, so.
Good question. Um, you know, as it relates to the early release in that hour and change, time that, that we're using for professional development, you know, for our staff, the teachers.
Learning communities, yep, collaboration, student data, all those things.
So my, maybe, and, and just throwing it out here as a talking point, but what if we just made it a full day? But took one day every quarter, two days a quarter, and did the professional de- development?
So, for professional development, that, that would work. It would extend, like, we'd have to extend our school year because if students don't come, the day doesn't count, except for our conference waiver days. So we could do that, but that doesn't really solve the problem when it comes to the, the student data work. That needs to be done on a very regular basis. And if we only do that once a quarter, it doesn't really have a lot of impact. It's more like just looking at it than really being able to act upon it, which they would do if they were able to meet very frequently.
So I, I'm, go ahead, Yoshimi. No?
It's like an hour and a half. Um, so there's, uh, I, I don't have the schedule here in front of me, but it's.
You're a nine-thirty start.
Yeah, I ca- I, yeah, don't quote us on that, but.
Eight o'clock start now?
No, seven fifty.
Seven, dump it, the high school is.
Yeah, so.
So I think you're.
Some, it's a little, I think it's a little, not, not a little after nine, because there is a fifteen-minute window for the teachers to get back to their classrooms, get set up for kids, so.
Wednesday.
Wednesdays.
Um, oh, I really do wanna talk about the data piece. We're talking about improving our data, right? And improving our student learning. So, um, and I'm gonna look at the students here in this when I say this. So if you take a test on week five and we as a staff look at that data and we say, everybody missed problem seven on this math, we need to reteach that. That's the concept, right? So on the, on that piece, that's the reason we look at it each week. We should go back in and we should look at that data. That's just an example, but that's the, the weekly piece. So that's why the frequency versus, now, if we're gonna do a new curriculum rollout or we're gonna do something like that, that's that's a whole day, that's a different type of thing.
More than one day, yeah.
I think there's good points on both sides of this. Right, like, so when I first heard about the Wednesday change, I too thought, what? Our work in parents, and two, right? And then when Kim, you and I talked, you described all the reasons why. That made sense to me. Like, it makes sense. Kids were, a lot of kids were going home to empty homes. You've got the middle school kids who are waiting around for sports. Um, the PLC time, of course, and all of that makes sense. So then, you know, the other side, right? Justice compelling to have a case, um, which tells me we're just not ready. So I, I think I fully support trying to negotiate pausing this for a year and making sure that, like, we really talk to our community, we know what the needs are.
We have supports in place, whatever those are. It feels really rushed right now to try to implement this at the beginning of this school year. I definitely think something needs to change. I love the idea of figuring out, like, could we do full days Monday through Friday and have whole days of PLC? Or maybe, like you were saying, Deanna, you still need to work in some time periodically somehow, but maybe there's a hybrid to do that. Uh, but I don't think we're gonna figure that out by the end of August. So I would, I would for sure be supportive of pausing on this and having a little more discussion about it.
I would agree, even after hearing the concerns of, um, enrollment, you know, or not enrollment, I mean, just attendance. You know, kids just won't, they just don't come to school now. You know, some of that information would have been good to have before, but, you know, I think she's right. We just, we don't, we haven't had enough time to really look at it. But, um, I kind of agree with Jason too, maybe looking at going to full days if that's what, if that's what we need to do. But at least they give us some time. So I would be, I would be in favor of, you know, giving you permission to go discuss that with, with the union.
I agree. Um, question, do we think with the late start Wednesday, um, the PLC attendance will be better?
Well, I mean, I, I would hope so. Um, we did have a couple teachers at the meeting who brought up, like, and this is, I, I don't wanna say quoted because you can't quote something, but I'm gonna try and do the best I can. Would you rather me have a dentist appointment on a Wednesday afternoon when you don't have to pay for a sub? And you wouldn't have a sub teaching in class, or would you rather me have it on a Tuesday when I have to have a sub? So I heard that. Um, but we also know that if we make dentist appointments, most of us go every six months, give or take. And we can schedule them at three or three-thirty anyhow and they would be done for the day. So I, I think, I don't know that that's a, a valid thing on the Wednesday afternoons. I do think, as many of the students, right, and anybody can say, I'm a creature habit. And I get up pretty much the same time now on Saturday or Sunday. I hope I can roll over and go back to sleep, but my body pretty much wakes up at the same time in some way on the weekend, right? And so do I hope that teachers would follow that same routine, come in, be fresh in the morning to sit down and look at data and do that work? I would hope it would improve, but I have no way of.
The thing that, I think the comment that I would say on that is I say the very vast majority of our teachers are there all the time. Um, there's maybe a handful that might be a challenge, but the other challenge that comes from it is at the middle school, it's not because they're leaving and going to dentist point. They have kids, they, we had to have, we've never had athletic contests on Fridays for middle schoolers. We used to not allow contests on Wednesdays. Contests are every single day because of the bus shortage, transportation shortage, and, and official shortage. So a lot, middle school, uh, there's times that third of their staff are, are leaving, have to leave because they've got kids, they've got games and they're getting on a bus or then other teams there. And that won't be a problem if they're in, if it's in the morning. And then it also makes it a little bit easier for consistent time going to contests and those things for the after-school activities. And we, that we can, I mean, there's, we, there, I, there's a teacher, what, one of my, for the principals said to me, they have a teacher that coaches all four seasons at the middle school. They leave, they're hardly ever at their PLCs because they're, they're out the latest. So they're, they don't start oft until two-thirty and practice over here at three. They're not there because they're going to practice at all year.
Yeah.
So that would solve that problem too.
I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm all for going back and having the discussion. It just sounds like at some point in time, as far as teachers in the district, that it's gonna be more beneficial to have a late start rather than an early release. So, we've, if you postponed it a year and you're able to work something out, whether it's with the Boys and Girls Club or whoever it is. I mean, I know, it just sounds like that's gonna be more beneficial for the staff, but, I mean, I'm, I'm all for reopening the discussion.
So the only thing I wanna make, um, we have some guests who just walked in and other, anybody who's listening, um, we have a three-year teacher contract that says it's late start Wednesday. This discussion and potential MOU would be one year. This would not be a three-year. This would be an ability to do some work and study and make some plans and hear from our community about the adjustment.
Yeah.
So I just want, for the record, I just wanna make sure that we're working on that.
So, what I heard the most from community members was the same issue that Jason brought up. You know, why, why are we having a late, a delay arrival or early release instead of the full day quarterly? Um, you know, I, I can relate, you know, I had many years, I had to be in Kennewick, ready to work at eight AM. And I would be in a situation with, you know, five weeks left scrambling what I'm gonna do. And, you know, I own my own business, so I don't have a boss that says they're gonna fire me, but I, I do have to be at work and I have to be there before ten AM. Um, most days, I mean, I have very reliable employees, but you have to be there, I have to work. And I think, you know, this isn't a plan that we are ready to roll out right now. So I would like to see it revisited and take a look at it. Um, it's impossible to find daycare for one day a week for, you know, just that morning slot. A lot of people have family, friends and neighbors that would help, but for those that don't have help, they would be put in a really impossible situation.
One thing about the Boys and Girls Club, they have these types of programs, uh, early drop-off, late, late pickup at lots of schools, just not here. So it's something they've done, they've done in other communities, so, but it will take us some time to work through that, so.
Well, I'll make a motion to authorize, uh, Kim and Deanna to go back to discuss um, a one-year MOU for, uh, early release.
Second.
Alright, it's been moved and signed in. Alexander, what do you think? Kami? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Alright, moving on to, uh, action item number two is vouchers. Questions on vouchers?
I don't.
None for me.
I have one. I was letting everybody else go first. Um, I know, I think I've seen this before, but what is Planet Turf? And that is because we cannot buy ag fertilizer, is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, thank you.
And I think this is part of our gypsum work we're doing and some other fertilizer. If I was to look at the invoice exactly, I think that's.
Why did we give sixteen thousand to Kennewick School District?
Tri-Tech?
Oh, Tri-Tech, okay.
Good question.
Yeah.
Questions?
Ted Brown Music Company, that's a pretty big chunk.
Oh, that was the sound system for the high school.
Oh, cool.
Yes, for the new stadium.
Graduation that we didn't have, that we got to hear.
Yeah, Mr. Bailey chose to use some of his building budget to buy that.
He saved up.
He did. And I think it was a good savings for the dis-.
I mean, it was a good thing for the district.
Well, I would make a motion to approve the vouchers.
Hold second. Been moved and signed. Any further discussion? Alexander? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. Motion carries. And moving on to consent items. One through three.
We move to approve consent items, one through three.
I'll second it.
Second, any discussion? Alexander? Kami? Yoshimi? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. Motion carries. That concludes our action items for tonight. Moving on to reports. Delise, you're up first.
Okay, so I don't, I still don't have anything due to our network issue, but I will, as soon as it comes back up, which is Friday or Monday, um, I'll have May, June and enrollment for you on August fourteen.
As well as budget.
As well as budget. It's gonna be a big day for me.
And we're still, what day was tentative approval for budget?
Fourteen. Fourteen.
Thanks.
So hang on for, hang on for a long meeting.
We'll be talking a lot that day.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for me? Thank you. Deanna?
I'll be fast. Thank you. Um, back from my medical, so I just was back on Monday, so, um, I don't really have a lot to report. Um, trying to get my office situated, but all the stuff we have going on there, I've cleaned it three times now. Every day I've been there, it's still not clean. Um, but they're getting everything done, so it's very nice. But I don't think everybody, um, especially Kim, she- Um, but they're getting everything done, so it's very nice. But I don't think everybody, um, especially Kim, she, everybody was very respectful and gave me time to heal. And Jalisa was a great support, my assistant, and I, today was the first day I got a text from a board member, that was Jason asking me how I was doing. So thank you so much. I appreciate the time and I've never not worked for six weeks since I was probably sixteen. So, um, it was unusual, unusual, but glad to be back.
Don't stir crazy.
Sometimes I, I had, we did a whole garage cleaning project, made my husband bring me a tub and I sat there and cleaned it organically. He hauled it back, so.
Nice. Thank you. Any questions for Kim?
Thank you. Um, so my board report, um, communication, I talked about the parent events, the ice cream social. And, and I know it sounds like it was kind of this back and forth and a little bit negative or whatever. It really wasn't. It was. We shared about the capital levy. I don't know if you know, but the big pile of dirt out here is a big deal. The tennis court is great. We're. Weekly, um, meetings about that and I was able to share that, the roof at Housel, all the great things that are going on. So it's, it was positive. On our mind note tonight is planning for the parade, State Day Parade, Monday the second. We will have, the school district will have our entry. A school bus, our trailer, what we've done. We've already planned our T-shirt, so we've sent out emails, so if you can join us, that'd be great. Red and white night for the Booster Club is Friday night, um, August sixteenth. It's a great time, good food. Um, Deanna and I get a table. We always, we have. Spend money and we support our school systems.
Um, it should be a football conflict. There's no football.
No football conflict. So, uh, we, we got that worked out, because last year was the first one and kinda got down to that last bit, so. Um, my welcome back letter is going out Monday next week. It'll have a calendar of events. Oh, I see T E C and E T C. I guess my check didn't check. Um, but anyhow, um, we'll have a calendar of events on it, so, like. August fifteenth is the new teacher and the sixteenth is, you know, I mean, it'll have for everybody and it'll be out for the public. School supplies are getting finalized. Um, they'll go out on Monday as well. The elementary is done. We just got middle school, just waiting for the last couple pieces. Um, for anybody who's listening, the school district is going to supply anything. Cleaning or storage related. Now, you're gonna laugh when I say that, but if you've ever looked at the school list before, they would say. Hand sanitizer, a box of tissues, right? So there will be none of those things on the supply list. So tissues. The gallon, if you have elementary kids, the gallon Ziploc baggie, the tissue and the. Hands, oh, and the Clorox wipe, well, I should use Clorox wipe, but anyhow, sanitizing wipes. We're gonna provide all that for each building, um, from the district. Um, and the, you might ask, why is that or why is that a big deal? I don't think that the cleanliness of this table should be you as a parent's responsibility. I think that should be our responsibility and so. And the, when we buy a case of tissue, the cost for us for a case of tissue versus a family going out and buying the. Travel side tissue for, it just, it, it's a kind of a respectful thing to do. So that on, on the piece there. So that'll go out on Monday as well. Um, so public, one thing I have good news to share with you. I bought and sold my house on, or I sold my Grammy house and bought a Proster house. I'm moving to Proster this weekend, so I will be part of your community. As of, I get my keys on Saturday morning at seven, so I'll be part of your community. Um, legal, um, we really don't have anything going on. I'm happy to say our network is down and is being restored. Um, I look over at Sean, um, uh, we, so I just, I wanna, so we can have a good chuckle on something that's maybe not so cool. Um, we're going back up, we're hoping our network and everything will be restored by give or take Friday, Monday at the latest, but Friday. But I don't know if you had anybody traveling across the United States in the last couple of days. Um. The airlines were stuck, everything was stuck. I don't know if you're a Microsoft business teams. Well, CloudStrike, which we have. They failed them big people, so us little people in Proster, um, you know, it fails. And I guess what I'm saying and the reason I'm chuckling about it is that even happens to Microsoft that's supposed to have the best. Fire, you know, safeties and protocols and whatever, and it can happen to them. So we, we've done that, we've protected our families and our data, but we're gonna be back up and ready. Um, so when De- Delise talks about her reports and her accounts, like, my goals aren't quite done, because I'm not gonna reinvent the wheel and I'm waiting for that file to come back.
But I save everything on the cloud, so I have all my stuff.
But you didn't on Friday. Or the network day, Monday, Tuesday.
No, I have it all.
Capital projects, I don't need to go into this. Things are going really well, really exciting. And do you wanna talk about the roof at Housel? Um, the, the roof of the gym and then the flat part. We are, um, really excited about some grants, so we are going to fix the leak. I call it a Band-Aid. It's not very expensive, but we're gonna wait for that other grant to come out to be able to use the grant money, so we're not using money. So, um, vestibule, uh, we got the bids, went out to small works, so we're gonna have a secured vestibule. Um, so things are good. On the old tennis courts. Um, we are having some teams, some construction companies and some architects come in, so if you drive by the old tennis court and go slow. The fence is in a cement barrier and then the asphalt is on the inside. We are trying to find someone to come in and look and see a couple, these are a couple of things. Well, to get into the asphalt, even if we are gonna remove it, we're gonna have to take out a portion of the fence. That's taking out a pole, that's re-drilling the pole, doing whatever. So we're trying to figure out what is the best bang for our buck on the money. Right? So they don't generally build that, uh, uh, concrete berm around and put the post anymore. That's done inside part of the asphalt now. So what is the cost of doing smaller demolition and just doing a surface? Versus replacing or redoing. So you'll have more about that as I hear, but I just want everybody who's listening to know that. Okay, I've been asked quite a bit about grant consulting services. We've talked about them. Let's find somebody to help us with our grants. Well, there is one company called Arrow Leaf Consulting. They helped us with our early child, our. Oh, ECF, Early Childhood.
It's like a facility.
Facilities, yeah. Uh, early child facilities.
Yeah.
So that's how I got to know them. So I reached out to them and said, what about looking for other grants for us? And, um, there currently, there are some energy-saving grants for solar panels, for, um. HVAC units, there's some different things out there. She's, um, her name is Afros, but she's looking at, um. The potential of a science one, so we're, we're continuing like that. I also spoke to R G I, I don't know if you recognize that name, they're out of Sunnyside. They are the ri- uh, preparers, like, uh, writers of our Gear Up Grant that is a huge. Huge, huge grant. And they do smaller pieces also. So he and I have a phone call tomorrow. So, um, you do talk and I really hate this, is the point of this whole piece, so I am exploring those options. Um, there are a couple of things. I, you know what happens when you assume, but I assumed, much like. When I'm selling my home, the realtor doesn't get paid until I sell my home, correct? Well, grant writers, I kind of assumed that they get you a grant. And then they get a portion of that grant, but they don't all work that way. Depends on the size of the grant, it depends on the. It, some grants are very, very competitive and take tens of hours, hundreds of hours to write. Versus some that are less competitive. So depending on the type of grant, whatever, sometimes you prepay your work. And sometimes they get it if they get the grant. So I'm learning that. So I'll come to you with contracts and proposals, information after I get that. But just wanted you to know, I'm on the path. Um, we did the three new grants that I told you about, um, last week, there's no, we found out one's for twenty-five, twenty-six for. Wife, uh, hotspots, right?
Well, that's, yes.
And then there was two more that they're good for the replacement. Grants for some of our Chromebooks. Remember, we talked about putting, building that capacity? So there's some really good news out there, so we'll keep you posted. Some are happening. Um, I don't wanna say, let's see. Deanna, what did you think of the new board table?
It's really nice. Looks very professional.
You guys are gonna think, whoa.
Of course, Selena dragging these tables around.
So it's beautiful. Um, we're working on it. The screens are up. Um, not all the furniture is there, the chairs, um, so.
It'll be a really nice space to conduct professional board meetings.
Yeah, and the cameras will be perfect, the microphones, it'll just, it, you will just be so excited. Um, admin retreat, Sunday, um, we'll check in Sunday, August eleventh, and we leave on the thirteenth. Um, we're really excited to get that real kickoff. And then on August nineteenth is our. Welcome back day to our whole staff and our guest will be Jaime, Jaime. He's from. Capasus, uh, Leadership Institute in Woodburn, Oregon. I met him at the Farms of School Conference. For a twenty-year educator, we get stories a lot of times, but, um. After twenty years, I don't get teary very often, right? Meaning like you don't pull my heartstrings after. I want you to know, I needed a box of tissue. Um, he talks about his life and his movement and his family and coming from Me Too Con and the work that he's done and he's, his. Siblings going to college and their whole thing, and I just think it'll be amazing for our staff to hear. And so he's going to come and speak, and then he's gonna speak to the parents that night. So he's gonna speak on the nineteenth to the staff during the day and to our community at night. And, um, I don't know if I'm saying the word properly, it's capasus, um, it's translated to able, and so it means. Able and he, so it's holding people able and helping his community and people learn. About what it takes to help them to be better. So it's just amazing story. And that's my report.
Question, Kim?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is that, um, are you gonna, if we can have an invite sent out or something like on Facebook for the nineteen?
Yep, I'm gonna hope that you could come in the morning for my big rah rah, and then again in the evening if you can for. The parent, if you, if you can't make the morning.
Great, thank you. Uh, moving on to director reports or board member reports, Michelle?
I don't have anything.
I'm just excited to see the word.
Um, so I had a question, so when in the new boardroom, when do we anticipate, middle of August or late August?
So, um, I think we're gonna have to say August twenty-fourth will be our, or twenty-eight, eight, twenty-eighth will be our first one. And Selena's probably rolling her eyes back, and Sean maybe a little bit. She might be going Kim, September, Kim, September, but we're, we're shooting for August twenty.
Um, I was just gonna say, I, I, I've received a bunch of calls about what the heck we're doing over here. What do you guys build now? Or what, why are you tearing the grass out? And, you know, it's nice to say that we're moving forward with the tennis court project. So that it'll be ready for the kids come. I guess spring.
Yeah, so the, the completion date for, is October twenty-third.
Um, so it's been pretty.
And, oh, by the way, one change order costs us five hundred and seventy-two dollars, just because we had to move an irrigation piece.
Are you guys getting refreshments out there?
So that's part of our capital levy project money.
You know, the kids, we have, um, you know, we have kids in sports and we've been out here, you know, almost all summer. Personal bathrooms, you know, there's porta potties, but they're way over there in that corner or some way down there, you know.
It's, it is in the capital levy projects list.
That I, you know.
Yeah.
That and parking space.
Yeah, I don't know, the way there's a lot of solutions about parking, but we do have bathrooms are in the plan.
Something that I do recommend.
Yep, they're, they're on the number six on the list, but yes, they're part of the plan. Nobody loves the porta potty.
And I imagine, you know, for a tennis match, we'd have to bring in special facility. Just the two or three that we have for baseball and softball won't be adequate.
No.
Um.
We're, I just wanna share it since we're talking about it, it's kinda off the, uh, Jackson's looking at, you've seen some of the. Little bit nicer ones that I call them the wedding party potties. Yeah, like the little trailers. Someone looking at, yeah, we're looking at some of those potential.
Gotcha, for meats and stuff.
Yeah, for big, for big stuff.
Real ones.
Till we can have the real ones, yeah.
That makes sense. I did hear that, um. Old Proster High School, the new district office has AC now.
When it worked, when I came on Monday. It was good, because I was in there a couple of times before and it was enjoyable.
I know when I went in there just for a visit, it was rather hot and cumbersome and, um, to hear that. Uh, some of our staff has to wear sweatshirts now, it's, uh, it's, that's a good, that's a good thing. So, very good. Thank you. Um, so that's it for tonight. Uh, future, uh, meeting is. August fourteenth, uh, right here in the Proster Library Workroom at six PM. This meeting is adjourned.